And if there is any individual questions that you think about when you're at home, please don't hesitate to contact me. Same with any viewers, please call in and we have it answered.
Brenna, do you have any questions for Mr. Broden? Chris Allen?
I do, but I'm not sure in to follow up on Eons.
Yep.
You said passing the exam, but I do know that different exams for college credit require different levels.
Yes.
Do you happen to know whether that was a three or a four out of five?
A three is a passing level.
Okay, but it depends on the colleges like, especially with the history and the world government wants. Most colleges are requiring a four for those. So I was just wondering if you give us any information on that? Or is that something?
I don't have it right to hand, but I can, they only came out at the end of last week. So I wanted to get the best overview of everything before we dissect into it. But there were, there were fives and fours in all of our.
So some students were getting fives, some were getting fours.
What's that?
Some were getting fives, fours.
In some of the AP classes, yes, yes.
I would love to have.
I can have a more full report for you for your next meeting. Yeah.
That's great. Thank you.
Jason. Just under number five, why the delay for the winter coaching positions as far as interviewing and hiring? Compared to the last time?
I didn't, I didn't, I don't detect it as being a delay because the season doesn't actually start till the end of November. And the importance was getting us into the summer, taking care of the students now who need the recovery, getting the positions for the fall covered, and then moving on to now working on the winter side. It wasn't a delay, Jason. There's no, didn't, didn't, I don't, I don't see it as being a delay. It's the end of July now.
Yeah, I know.
But we will, we will be on that in the next.
I know they start December, but it's just with the girls varsity team that's already been practicing together and team building and bonding, the boys are falling way behind compared to, I mean, summer is really the only time we can actually play basketball together. So it's just, you know, from my standpoint, it just would be, and I know you're in a tough situation. You just got the job. So, you know, it's, I know there's more prayer compared to boys basketball. But it's just for me, it seems like.
No, there's a lot. I mean, after two years, I'll have a better handle on things. But there's a lot we've just come off of.
I think you have a good handle on things right now.
And with the, you know, again, going back to, you know, the mass in COVID, who knows where that, who knows where it's going to go and who knows where the state are going to tell us in six weeks what we can do. I mean, we will, we will keep you under community well posted on. I just, I can't, I can't commit now. I'm, me, I'm, I'm the extreme optimist. I'm going no mass, no full board. Let's go straight in. And I try and rub that off on the kids right now as well, because some are still very anxious about coming in, return to the 2A building.
I think you're going to do a good job.
Coupled with high school, so.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Molly. John, I was on this board. You must have been here at that time when we got off, when we exited New England Association of Schools and Colleges. And we were both around when we got back on board with the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. My recollection, strong recollection is that one of the recommendations of the NEAS accreditation process was we put a lot more effort into increasing the size of our recruitment for AP classes. And if I recall correctly, we made AP history, and I believe five years ago in 2016, we actually, pardon me, AP honor roll. And I believe in 2016, we actually made AP honor roll.
Two years.
Second year running, which was a far more notable achievement. Because in order to do so, we had to both increase the size of the cohort and as well as raise the overall foreign levels. And that was kind of the zenith here. And I have, I have concerns. And I think there probably reasonable explanations for it. But I do have concerns that we have somehow wandered maybe a little bit away from our overall commitment to AP classes, which at one point I think were considered to be the exclusive domain of the high flyers. And we changed direction when NEAS said, you know what? You need to get as many kids into that program as possible. And I will say bluntly, Molly, that if we're going to have a successful AP program in this school and be able to afford this support financially, we really do need to increase those enrollments as well as that performance. So that's one of the things that I'm going to commend to you, John, for your consideration here. Now that you're building leader, I hope that we will see the kind of AP results that we saw even as not as recently as five years ago.
You will. You will. I'll say that publicly. You will.
Thank you.
I wasn't here when we got off NEAS, but I was a major component for us to get back on NEAS. So I do want to follow through on that. And I like it so much. I'm on the NEAS commission as well. So I believe in it, David. And like I say, give us a mulligan for last year, but we're getting back on that frame. Definitely.
Deb Wright, you have anything for Mr. Broden?
No, I thought it was a, a great first report and more to come. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Prior. Get unmuted.
I'm sorry. I, I was listening to John, but I didn't, what am I being asked? I didn't have my hand up. That's what somebody thought.
Oh, so I kind of, I kind of changed things up here a little bit tonight. We got a brand new principal and it's the first time we've been face to face a lot of us. And I kind of did a roll call to see if anybody had anything they want to talk to the principal about before we moved on.
I'm sorry. I literally sat, put my head down to take a note.
You fell asleep? All right. Thank you.
Too busy checking on that Robert's Rules thing, which I did post. It is, it does say ignoring blanks and abstentions, the majority of those voting one way or the other is sufficient for the adoption of any motion. Anybody wants the, 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 it's in rules online. And I just did a quick note to make sure I had that because somebody would ask. Sorry, John.
Um, Mr. Broden, thank you. Nice job.
Thanks.
I'm going to bring up the ghost in the closet because I think it needs to be brought up. We've had a member of the community speak. I know Jason is very passionate about basketball. I know you and I have had some conversations and I just want to get it out, you know, where the public is listening. And everybody knows that it is something that we are working on. And I guess I'm looking at you to agree with me that I've, that I've understood everything that you've told me. We have some applicants. We're going to interview the applicants. None of those were interviewing all of them, but that.
We're going to sift through. We're going to identify the ones to.
It isn't something that we're just not taking seriously. We're just going to, you know, we just got to get through this other stuff that we had to get through, you know, starting off with a new principal and getting, taking care of, you know, this other stuff, you know, making sure we're getting the education right. And we will work on basketball coach. We just don't have. I, I think that some people thought we might have an answer tonight. And I just want to make sure everybody understands that we're working on it. And it is very important to some people and I totally get that. And a conversation with a customer that came into my office today and tried to explain to me how passionate he was about basketball. And I asked if he knew where the Terry costume was because it's in the corner of my closet. I mean, I'm passionate about Bellas Falls and I'm passionate about basketball. But we just, we got to get through some other stuff first. So I just want everybody to understand that we, we're not taking it, we're not ignoring even, you know, public comments from the public are something that a lot of times we don't get them. And it's nice to hear a parent who is, you know, passionate about something. So we're working on it. So thank you very much, John. Do we have anything on finance today?
Laura's, you can ask her if she has anything to share.
Laura, do you have anything for us tonight?
Well, no, we could just go over the rate for payment for the parents. It is scheduled already for August 13. We just working on state reportings that are due beginning of August and finishing closing the year of FY '21. And that's all we have for now.
Does anyone have any questions for Laura? Boy, you get off easy tonight.
Thank you.
David Clark, Coalition Vermont Student Equity. Wanted that added to your report. So let's see what you got.
Okay. The Coalition for Vermont Student Equity has been working on coming up with an adjusted weighting formula for funding special education. Act 173 of the Vermont Legislature changed the method by which special education is paid for from reimbursement model to block grant model. And block grant model would, if implemented, seriously disadvantaged a lot of the high need schools such as we find in Windham Northeast Supervisory Union. In this district, I think Andy ran the numbers, probably had some help. And we will be looking, if implemented, at a direct hit to taxpayers in Athens, Crafton, Rockingham, Westminster, in round numbers, about a million dollars a year in new taxation. If the block grant were implemented. A group of board members, Mad Hoc Committee, got together and started working on it. And we were able to get legislation passed, which has created a task force to examine exactly how we will pay for it. Because if we implement what's known as a weighting system, then a student who is more costly to educate will have an appropriate financial weight assigned to that student. If you're looking for an example, under Act 173, the equivalent weight for a sped kid, it'd be about 1.25 full time equivalent. When the legislature's own study indicated that it is more along the lines of a 3.0 full time equivalent. That's why we would get hit so hard. That task force is now working or beginning work on looking at the weights. There, there are some political pushing and pulling going on because there are some groups who feel that it should be based on, heaven help me, Chris, what did we call the small schools grant? A, a, leave it alone, David. In other words, it would, would have been based on one time money, which falls into the category of now you see it, now you don't. If you have a weighting formula, that's how you're calculating education. An immediate outcome of the weighting formula was we were able to get a two-year moratorium on what is known as the excess spending penalty. And schools which exceeded a specific spending level were required to pony up a dollar to the ed fund for every dollar they were over the spending penalty. One of those schools, Bellas Falls Union High School. And as a result of the work of the Coalition for Vermont Student Equity, we've already managed to save this school many thousands of dollars because of the moratorium on excess spending. And I said it here the last time I was sitting at this table. I'm going to say it again. 30 years ago, Sally Warren, Chair of the Bellas Falls Union High School Board famously said, you don't build B1 bombers with good intentions. You build them with money. And it has taken money in order to produce the result, which has got us to the point where maybe the schools that have high burdens for especially costly kids will get equitable support for them. But back to the matter of money, I have already let Molly know that I would appreciate it if this high school would endorse this member's use of the high school letterhead in order to urge other schools which have benefited from the work of the Coalition for Vermont Student Equity and stand to benefit even, even further if we are able to successfully revise the weighting formula to pony up. And bluntly, Windham Northeast needs to pony up. It's been a relatively small group of people, including me, who've been carrying the weight on the funding of it. And now I think it's time that we commit resources to the efforts, which hopefully will save our taxpayers many tens, if not hundreds, thousands of dollars. It's my pitch for him. Thank you.
So I have a question. I've heard this a couple of times from you and I think I'm starting to understand it. But what I don't understand is the pony up. I don't understand what you're.
I, I intend to ask our boards to help support the lobbying, which has produced the result, which materially, materially is S13. That was the legislation that created the task force to implement weights. And it matters because in order to do that, we needed to hire an effective lobbyist to essentially babysit the legislature, which is a task that board members by and large don't have the time to do. How effective was the lobbyist? In March, Senate President Pro Tem Becky Ballance said, action on the weighting formula ain't happening this year. That was an unequivocal statement. In May, S13, Philip Ruthville passed both houses of the legislature unanimously. That's, that's what money did for us. And it's important that we continue to lobby to ensure that we end up with what are equitable weights for kids. And it will have a huge, huge impact in this district on taxpayers, both if we do it and even, you know, more consequentially, very negative impacts if we don't come up with adjusted weights. So I hope that's your answer, Molly.
Um, no, I didn't really get what I'm looking for, but that's okay.
Well, I'll try it. I'll try it.
We'll talk about it. That's okay. I was really looking, I mean, you, you've done a very good job. Every time you talk about it, you say almost exactly the same thing. But what I don't understand is, you know, when you say pony up, I'm not hearing any dollar figures or what that honey is really for. Because, you know, in my very sheltered life, to help support lobbyists, I'm thinking that you need to, you need to bundle the grain steaks and supply with to make some sign. I don't know what that means. And, and what you're looking, what, what you're looking for, what you think this district ought to do to help support what you guys are doing. Maybe I'm the only one that doesn't understand this, so excuse me if I'm not. But you know, if I am, I don't totally understand, you know, what you're looking for.
Thank, Molly. Thank you. I understand what you're asking me. The previous SU meeting before, this month, maybe Chris, it was. The June meeting, we had Mark Schaber, who is the Executive Director of the Coalition for Vermont Student Equity. He is the non-paid functionary who is keeping all the balls up in the air. And Mark did explain the financials. What I can tell you is that we spent $3,000 a month directly in lobbying. We had another roughly $5,000 in direct expenses for legal and accounting work. And we continue to be supporting lobbying while the task force is meeting. There is at this point also, I believe, social media. I'm not on Facebook. I'm a Luddite. But we are also supporting a social media effort to raise, say, white consciousness around what the important dynamics are around weighting. So we're right now spending about $5,500 a month. We have enough money, both in the treasury and commitments from boards, that it will carry us, I think, most of the way through the fall. We will need to continue to fundraise as we go along, particularly if and when the task force comes back, when the legislature reconvenes, recommends legislation to the legislature. And then you have the usual force trading that takes place in crafting a weighting formula bill. We really, really need to continue to have the direct support of our lobbyists in Montpelier. And that will cost money. I have said several months running that we need to support the effort. And it's my intent to come back to this board, probably with Mark Schaber, the Executive Director, and try and wrap what we believe would be a number around what constitutes a fair contribution. At the same time, I would like to be able to use both the high school and the WNESU letterheads to solicit other boards, other chairs directly. Because whatever else they can bring in lowers the amount that we're going to be potentially asked to provide what I refer to as pony up. So I'm asking for permission to use the letterheads so that we can spread the load and therefore, you know, reduce the amount that all boards need to spend instead of just a few that are willing to meet the call.
I understand better now.
I apologize for not being able to state it clearly.
You know what I was doing here. Okay, so anyone have any questions for David? Jack?
The, this issue has been voted on by this board. So it would be appropriate and consistent with it to issue, to allow a letterhead stationary to be used to note that and solicit support. What has been missing is we don't have this on the agenda. And I do think that it would be good to have on the, our next agenda, this item with action anticipated. Because what we would be doing is having a vote to appropriate some money so that we can quit talking about this and actually start to underwrite this again. We, we are disproportionately penalized by the laws currently written with disproportionately benefit by its amendment. And it's not hard to justify from a cost benefit analysis, spending $5,000 to save half a million. So I would just ask our, our chairs' permission to have that be on our next agenda so we can get on with this.
Jack, send out an email to me so that gets on the agenda, please.
Will do.
Best way to get anything on the agenda is send me an email.
Totally agree with that.
Okay, let's move on to, on our unfinished business. Deb Wright's just going to get us up to speed on negotiations.
Okay. Jack, you might want to take your hand down on the screen. Yep, there you go. What we have set is a meeting on Wednesday with the teachers at 5:30, where we will reopen. You understand we've already settled the 2021. Now we're on to 2022. And we start the meeting, start with the teachers at 5:30 on Wednesday, opening up to talk about ground rules and moving on to their requests for the year for a one or two year contract. We haven't sorted that out yet, or three, I don't know, at this point, based upon our previous discussions. And we haven't set a date yet with the support staff. I'd like to do it sooner than later. I'd like to try and do, I know it's doubling up meetings, but trying to do it simultaneously or almost one on top of another will move us further along faster. As opposed to the last minute discussions we had with support staff, I felt we gave them short shrift, but really didn't have a lot of choice based upon the timing and the money for this, for the fiscal year. So that's, that's the short of it. If there are questions, please let me know.
Does anyone have any questions for Deb? Okay, let's move right on.
Yeah, I do. I have one. Where are we approving it? I know Rockingham Board has approved and WNESU has approved the one for last year. Is, is, has the other boards besides, except for ours?
Yeah, last, get the answer from David, please. Yes.
David, so, so they, all the others have approved there?
You and elementary's approved, I believe. Am I correct, Jack?
Yes.
So it's, so it's just the high school that has, okay, and we're going to have a special meeting to do that?
Okay. Chris or John, I'm not sure who's doing appointments in this nation. So we have an appointment for a science teacher and a math teacher. Who's going to speak to that?
Let me just speak to them. Okay, we lucky in this time of the year, coming off the end of the pandemic. We've been very lucky to find two great people. We have Deborah Rossman, who is coming in as a new science teacher. And Jennifer McKay is coming in as our new math teacher. The math teacher will replace Mr. Murphy. And the science teacher will replace our former teacher of a year ago, Mr. Norton. Sorry, who was that? Science is Deborah Rossman replacing Mike Norkin, who left us kind of at the 12th hour before the year of COVID. And we've got Jenny McKay, who is coming in to replace Mr. Murphy, who is now moved up to administration. And I'm very, very confident in both these people. They are top notch.
So I would like someone to make a motion to appoint our new science teacher, Deborah Rossman, and a math teacher, Jennifer McKay.
I have a motion, Molly, I both. This motion is to talk about it or? This motion to appoint and, and a motion to appoint.
Motion to appoint, then there'll be discussion of that.
Yes. Um, we were not meeting that other math, it's science teacher for a year or so. Why are we meeting that one now?
Well, we, we covered in this year of COVID mainly because I ended up doing, I took over senior projects. And there were many other small changes that Mr. Austin made. I was aware of them. But we were suffering a little bit on the science side of the spectrum. So we have three other science teachers that were doing the feather good job. Miss Gochow does teach. Part of her, part of her assigned duties are health too. So really we're at three and a half science teachers. So in order to, one of the science teachers does support senior projects, which is Mr. Arrow. So we had him teach a class and I took on all the senior projects last year, which enables to save, saving the year of loss. Hopefully now he is back this year.
So, so he was able to teach an additional class while you're doing that? Which he will, he will go back and take on the senior projects again?
Deborah, Deborah Rossman is going to be. Deborah, Deborah Rossman is gonna be taking on those, yes. Uh, Miss Gochow is gonna lead another health class because we did fall behind in health, one in health two, with the, the lack of Mr. Coons or that the year before, and we didn't really replace that health too. So, so that's where we have the backbone. So we're, we're in a good place now.
Great explanation, thanks.
Do you have a question, Jason? Yeah, I'd like to come. So you said there's now gonna be three and a half science teachers? How many, how many students?
Back to three and a half.
How many students per class?
Good question. I don't, I don't have an exact answer for you, Jason.
My, my concern is that, you know, we're getting a lot of heat from the taxpayer that, you know, taxes are already up and we're already at a nine-to-one teacher-to-student ratio, and that's really, it's a very low number.
I, I do know from personal experience, uh, my daughter had the honest chemistry last year. It was 18 in that class, so.
And then just on floor made us, uh, the Rockingham Board just made us a nice spreadsheet of like, what they were coming in at, like, you know, what step they're coming in at. So are these?
Both, both are coming in at slightly below the teachers they're replacing.
But are they coming at the appropriate step based on their background?
Based on their experience, yes, yeah.
Can we get that going forward, Mr. Brett? Like, when we have, it's easier for me to look at, okay, this person's like, at Rockingham, you know, like, 15 people coming in. So it was easy to just have, okay, this person, the right step, we can match it up with the CBA and boom, done. There's no questions asked instead of guessing. So I don't know if that's something you could do going forward. I don't. You know, we can look at that. But, I have no other questions, thanks.
David? I do, I do a comment. I need to back Jason up on this. In the past, when we've hired new staff, John, uh, we have specified where we would replace them on the schedule. So I, and, you know, we have an obligation to the taxpayers, obviously, to, uh, place them accurately. So certainly, I think that, um, math teacher, step seven, whatever it turns out to be, should be, uh, part of the motion because really, when you agree to employ them, we should also be specifying, you know, how much money we're agreeing to pay them. I, I think that's, you know, you, you buy a school bus, specify how much money you're spending on the bus. Hire a teacher, really have sort of an obligation to say how much money you're spending on the teacher. And it's not, not a criticism of the hire. I'm glad you've got good people. But I, I just think that we should tighten up that language a little bit.
Both, both are definitely coming in below their predecessors. I, I can't tell you exactly how.
Great.
Does Flora have that information in the, in the office or?
Yes, she does.
And can she give that to us?
In advance, that you want this information, if we can have it.
I can find that out.
Well, yes, that's, that's all I've heard tonight.
So, um, send me an email. We'll have it on next meeting.
But if we're voting on it tonight, what they want it was in advance. So that's what I was asking.
Oh, I can see. Are you thinking Mr. Frere's work, like, that is the right?
We have to have another special meeting if you want to.
Part of me, folks, I think here what's being said, sorry.
Tells us what they want on the agenda. It's our job to create the agendas based on what the board wants. You can't put it on there if you don't know what you want. We're more than happy to put.
Hold on, Jack.
We're more than happy to provide you with any information and all information that you want. As long as we know in advance, it's not an issue.
That makes sense.
Okay, Jack, now you can speak.
My, my apologies. It was just, I couldn't hear what was being said, and I wanted to know what was being said. The, uh, it is my recollection from, uh, from olden days that two things we always did is we always did, as both, uh, uh, David and, uh, and his, uh, the member to his immediate right, uh, said is we always had the, uh, the motion was to approve person at step X. Uh, I think it's a good policy and really we should do that. A second thing we used to do, and it's been kind of a while, uh, was that we would often, uh, bring as part of that the resume of the individual involved, you know, if you, in, in a way that benefits you, John, because if, say, somebody would come in at a, normally at a step six, and you wanted to make an argument that they should come in as a step seven, you get a way to point to the resume about this teacher of the year thing and this year in Africa and these other two things that justify that extra step. And it's, uh, it would benefit both the board and, and your administration to have that available to folks.
Okay, so you're right. And, you know, I think David and I and two others, probably seven or four is long enough, but yeah, usually we have that, that information on there. You know, I, I guess I'm gonna give Mr. Bradley a little bit of leeway right this second because it's the first time he's ever had to do this.
So I've got my notes.
We normally would have a little, a little more information.
Sure.
I think it's important that we, you know, let these two people get going and we get the more information. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I mean, this is the first time, you know, I'm going on my fourth year. I've never been asked for any of that stuff. I don't mind providing it. But I don't think it's, you know, on John that he didn't provide the steps and the resume and stuff. We're told that's what you guys want, that's what we'll get you about.
I don't think, I don't think Chris ever gave us a lot of that stuff, but he had it within, if somebody had a question, he could say, yeah, yeah, there's step six or whatever that. Yeah, I don't think we all need to have.
Molly, I am not gonna ask a motion question, but I want to indicate my readiness to act on the question.
I just, Mr. Brett, I just, I think it's really important. One thing I've learned is when you go to town meetings, you get a lot of questions that you don't know answers to. But if you have one question that we already know that the employee was hired at step whatever, and it's the right step, and it hits the CBA, it's kind of like trust and verify, like, what we do at work all day long. We trust, I trust you, Mr. Bradley. Just want to verify, that's all.
No, I'm not just feeding. I agree with you. It's important information to have, but.
And we should, we should tell you.
But we do, right. If you want it, just tell us. We'll give it to you. It's not a problem.
And I hope, I hope I'm not doing many more new hires.
I think we're ready for questions. So, um, we have a motion on the table to appoint Deborah Rossman as a science teacher and Jennifer McKay as a math teacher. And Deb Wright, how would you like to vote?
Aye, Deborah Wright.
Thank you. Jack?
Aye.
Dave?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Welcome aboard. We have two brand-new teachers. Motion's passed.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Um, Priscilla, I think this one is you. Retirement gift discussion.
Yes, um, teachers who have been in the district for a long, long time, um, I feel that they should be recognized. And, you know, it's just really important to see that, how much they have committed to our children. I'm specifically thinking of, I think there's only one that's retiring from our high school this year. She's actually retiring from the WNESU board, but she spent all of her teaching time here at the high school. And her commitment to our students was above board. I, I mean, I was always here late too, so I would see Linda, I'm talking about Linda Prince. She was here when, you know, a lot of times, just as late as I was, six, seven o'clock at night sometimes, and just cared about her students to no end. And I just feel that it's time that we start realizing how much some of these teachers are committed to staying with us and being with us. The Rockingham Board approved a motion at their board meeting on the other night. We have one teacher definitely that is retiring, that possibly two, that, um, are with over the 20 years. So my motion spoke to was that I move to give any teacher upon retirement who have served 20 or more years at the FUHS, a gift of $100 per year as recognition of their service and commitment to our students. That's somebody who's been here for years and years, and that's not a lot of money for any amount of time that they have put in. It's, it says, hey, we really valued you, we really appreciated you, we know how much you gave to our students and how much there is. I, that's my motion for tonight. I really would like people to also consider at some point the parent's support staff who might have been here that, like, John, most of those have not, or they're not going to a retirement situation when they leave either. Teachers leave, but I'm talking about teachers that actually retire from our system. Because I think it's important and we, we need to start realizing how much our teachers give and building that relationship with them and starting to have a good interaction. This is aside from negotiations, because negotiations address something that, that you negotiate to pay for your services. This is a, an appreciation and a recognition for everything, Nate, John.
Thanks.
David, well, I'm gonna oppose the motion, but it may actually be something of a surprise as to why I want to oppose the motion. Um, I have considered the fact that this may, uh, possibly stray into the realm of collective bargaining. But that's not the reason. Reason is that this board can pass a motion tonight, and we can get, uh, five, 10, 12 years down the road and have absolutely no idea why we're doing what we're doing. And I think that if this is something that is worth doing, that it's far, far better to embed it in policy so that we always have the ready reference, uh, to what we're doing and why we're doing it. And that is the reason, uh, Priscilla, that I will oppose it. I have to tell you that my thinking has evolved on this since the first time I heard it. And, um, I very strongly believe that if we're going to do it, that it should be done on the basis of policy and, uh, not simply an, uh, action taken one night by, uh, a sitting school board, uh, which may be very, very difficult to research, uh, going forward in time.
Can I respond to that? I, I agree that we should develop a policy around it, but I feel that we could pass the motion and then we can develop that policy based on, on the wishes and make sure that it's, it goes forward in that, in that way. So I agree it should be, you know, a policy developed to, um, support that and based on that. But with someone doing, having just gotten done, I'd really like to be able to do that and be able to give that to Linda at this point. That makes sense.
Anybody looking up here?
Um, good question. You know, where does that money come from? I think, Deb, are you trying to talk?
Yes, ma'am, I certainly am. And I have to say that this has been a girl interrupted conversation, basically, since I got on the school board some years ago. Yeah, David, you're laughing because that was funny. But, um, but the truth is, I'm sick of it. I've got to say that. We have gone over and over that, and every time I see, keep saying the same thing. We need a policy. Years have gone by. And yet, it's always the same thing. Oh, let's vote on this now and then we'll develop a policy. Oh, we have to take care of this now. Let's develop a policy. We need to develop a policy. It should be consistency. There's no parity throughout the school system when we do it this way. So we need a policy, and I would not be in favor of this at this point. Thanks.
Jack?
Weirdly enough, before, uh, both, uh, uh, both Deb and David started speaking to this, my note here was, this is a policy item, and, and the reason why it's important, and I, no, no knock on the idea. But, uh, we were having a back and forth not that long ago about, uh, about how we route queries to our administration from board members. And I know that we've adopted this, but it never landed in a policy manual. And because it didn't land in a policy manual, I couldn't refer to it. And we do need, you know, uh, we, we've discussed that individual boards have policy committees. Well, this is one of those places where it's a really good idea. Uh, you know, we need, we need a policy on appointment of new members. We need a policy on whether we give stipends and awards, what the context is. We need, we need policies on any amendments that we might make on what constitutes a majority of votes if we're gonna deviate from obvious rules. We just need to start saying, this is a, you know, a preliminary adoption of a policy that can be referred back to the, your policy committee, but we have to start having a record of what's adopted by the board so that we don't have to go through 10 years of notes to try to figure it out. There you go.
Yeah. If we were to go through a policy process with it and then come back to it, could we make it retroactive to people retiring this year? Would that be a possibility so that we were putting that, going in that opposite direction, knowing that the policy will take a couple of months at least, at minimum?
That's a hell of a policy.
Right, at least the minimum, at a minimum, right? So if we're able to complete it with this, this session before coming to the meeting?
I'm wondering what, what, uh, Jack was saying, as, doing it as a preliminary to a policy.
I, uh, Matt, here?
Would you want that as a, a friendly amendment? Is that what he want, Molly, or?
Well, there, there is an amendment on this yet, because I haven't made one. Uh, I made, I made a, uh, a, a motion, maybe David did, uh.
There's a new, no motion on the table yet.
All right, I knew that we refer this to our, to our board policy, uh, policy, uh, with a policy committee with the recommendation to, uh, draft a policy to this effect.
I'll second that.
I want to know what the motion is, because I didn't really have a motion.
It would be to refer the item of, uh, of stipends and gratuities to retiring, uh, school employees to the policy committee for the development of an appropriate policy and let them stretch it out.
You're amending Priscilla's?
No.
Motion?
No, I don't think Priscilla has not made one yet. She simply.
Did you really hear?
I said I move to give any teacher upon retirement who have served 20 or more years at the FUHS a gift of $100 a year as recognition of their service and commitment to our students.
Uh, uh, if.
And I can do it as a friendly amendment and, and.
I apologize, your chair, but I did not re, I didn't catch that as a motion.
Sorry.
I thought we were, I, I didn't realize that we were actually, I thought that this was, because it says retirement gift discussion. So I thought we were discussing it.
Yeah.
So.
I did, and I shouldn't play.
So.
We added the, um, you know, um, to, um, and as a preliminary thing and, but refer it to a policy committee for development of a policy to cover that?
I, I, I think the best thing to do would be to simply refer it to the policy committee so they can get the language tidied up, uh, so that the people know what it is we're voting on and so that future boards will have an idea that this is set in stone, uh, and, and we'll go from there. Now, I'm not entirely sure that this board is gonna vote in the affirmative for this policy, but we ought at least get something, uh, written out for consistency purposes. I was initially thinking that we could, uh, sort of ad hoc, make a recommendation and have that considered the first reading, but on second thought, it's just not baked enough to do that.
Okay, my turn, because I'm not really sure. You think you have a motion on the table right now to?
But we've, we've kind of, we said we would amend it, amend it to be, uh, the service of commitment to our students with the idea that the, this would be sent to the policy committee to develop a policy.
So you think there's a motion on the floor right now to say that?
Yes. With the.
So please repeat that.
Okay. If I can. Sorry, Molly. I move to give any teacher.
Hold on, they've already amended something. Jack, can you pull your amendment and we get this straight down a little better than this? This is crazy. Jack, can you pull your amendment and we get this straight down a little better than this? This is crazy.
But they asked if they wanted a friendly one.
Wait, was there a second, was there a second to Priscilla's motion? I didn't hear one.
No. Okay. I didn't, I did not believe that there was a motion being made. I thought we were discussing this.
And that's fine. It really doesn't matter.
Adam Chair, for the purposes of clarity, I move that the issue of stipends and rewards for retiring teachers be moved to the policy committee for development of an appropriate policy and a recommendation. But I, I need a second somebody. Don't all, you know, wave your hands at once.
I can give you a second except I think there's already a motion on the floor from Priscilla now.
Well, but Priscilla's was never, Priscilla's was seconded. That's the problem. So I need some, everybody needs to second something.
Now, Priscilla has pulled her motion of what, because the chair didn't realize what was going on.
Okay, Jack, I second it.
Yeah.
I'm going to take the heat on this one, but everybody's going to stop talking for a minute. We have on our agenda right now to discuss retirement gift discussion. So we have discussed it. Priscilla has brought to our attention what she would like to do. Um, we have a motion right now to send to the policy committee to make a policy on stipends and rewards for retirement teachers. And, and during that policy, we will put in, you know, whatever years and whatever stipend, that will all be written in that policy.
All that hoo-ha.
Trying to do is get that put to the policy committee right now.
Yep.
Do we have any other questions? Yes. The policy committee is going to spell this out. And I, and so when David first spoke, um, I was glad to hear that. Um, I am all for, I'm all for giving people something when they've done something great, but we have to, I've been on this board too long because I remember how many times, Deb, I can, I feel your pain. Every year this comes up and every year we do something different. And, and, and it used to be we gave somebody a thousand dollars and, you know, and it just, it just, we gotta stop this. It's gotta be written down. This is what we do. They've got to meet particular criterias to be able to, you know, be part of this. And, um, you know, it, it's just, this is muddy and I don't like muddy stuff. So I would, if anybody has any other questions, I would like to send this to them. Okay.
To our policy committee or to the W N A S U policy committee?
Well, you have already voted on it as a rock and a board, so now it becomes a high school board policy, correct? So this is going to come to the high school, that was all you in high school, board policy committee.
Who's, I don't remember who's on that. I know I am.
I thought we had one policy committee at the S U level. That's what, that's been in place since I've been here.
Well, we do, but on some certain instances, different schools will vote for different things. So, right?
A graduation, a high school graduation policy wouldn't be applicable to middle school.
So we have them, some separate. Can you have your hand up or can we vote on this?
Let's just vote on it. It's, um, I, I like to move the process along.
Hey, all those in favor of sending this to the policy committee, Deb Wright?
Aye.
Jack?
Yep.
David?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Priscilla?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Ian? Thank you. All right. That's going to the policy committee. Sorry for not being able to keep up here tonight. Okay. Items for next agenda, please, and don't send it to me the Friday night before the meeting. Um, get your thoughts together. If you need something on the agenda, send me an email. Um, Nicole is trying super hard to do what everybody wants. She kind of got caught in the middle today. Um, and, you know, I have a wicked busy day and she was texting me and I, I just trusted it. I said, yeah, go ahead. Um, I wasn't even, I didn't even think I read it. I was knee deep in customers and I felt bad because I think I set her up for some emails that she got bashing on and that was probably my fault. So send them out, but send them out the Wednesday before the meeting. Don't send them out Monday more. Director's comments? Yep.
Um, only that old home day is this weekend and, um, there'll be a lot of stuff down in the, the waypoint center. There will be, also be fireworks that evening and, um, there will be a COVID vaccine pop-up at the public safety building from, I believe, eight or nine o'clock in the morning until eight in the evening. They'll be providing Pfizer and Johnson and Johnson for those who are interested in receiving the vaccinations. Thanks.
Thank you. Jack, right?
Yeah, a couple of things, all right. Uh, one is, uh, took me a minute, but I did find the online version of Robert's Rules. It's called rulesonline.com and it does say, uh, majority of votes cast, ignoring blanks and abstentions. Uh, two, yes, please let's get another mic in, especially for people that want to make a community comment in person. That would be, be a lovely thing to just have a standing mic back of, over by where Molly's standing. Uh, third, uh, it used to be our practice, and I think it's actually supposed to be our practice, to have the text of any policies attached either to the agenda or as to our packet. And I'd like us to get back in that habit. I think it'd be great if the public saw what it was we were adopting. Uh, our, our town of Grafton does it. I think we could all do it. And, uh, I, I do finally think that would be really good if, uh, we could get clarification on the whole appointments process. I don't know if this is an agenda item, but I do think it would be useful to have Sean Tuohy, who advised, uh, the, uh, the unified board to elaborate on his rather lengthy, uh, description of what the process ought to be because it's at variance with what we've been doing for kind of a while. And I'd like to make sure we're in compliance with the law. So there you go. That's all I kept. That's a lot. Thanks.
Thank you.
David?
Molly, I've been leafing through the H V A C report for the high school. Um, some of us requested it all around the time school opened last year, finally turned up in April. I'm going to spare, uh, I'm going to spare us the details and it's going to hit a couple of bullet points here. Um, and this is, uh, refers to D Wing, which I believe is where we are now. And it says, the results of testing indicate that D Wing rooftop units are delivering just 52% of the designated outdoor air volume of 9,000 cubic feet per minute. Secondly, uncontrolled, uh, air distribution. The recently replaced rooftop units serving wings A and D are provided with duct mounted reheat coils only. The school's H V A systems are therefore unable to control ventilation rates each zone. Another issue being, uh, uh, another issue being controlled per zone airflow is uneven and cooling distribution. What does that mean? Uneven distribution? Well, there's another, uh, item here in the 15 pages of the summary that says we, uh, uh, encounter fumes from the kitchen in certain parts of this building. The reason that we, uh, have those fumes from time to time is this building apparently has negative pressure when it should have positive pressure. It is noted, uh, in this report that, uh, if you can smell it, um, it can be a source of smoke. And I'm going to suggest that, um, in the event of a significant kitchen fire, that could actually be a safety matter. So I think we do need to get on it with, um, the H V A system. And, uh, for better or worse, there were a couple of numbers mentioned in this report. Uh, one, our basic remediations according to, I think it's, uh, M E engineering that need to take place to bring our system up to code and it's $243,000 worth of work. Uh, maybe with some money that's reachable. They also recommend an additional $935,000 worth of H V A C. I think that the buildings and grounds committee needs to get going on this fairly soon so that we can, uh, do some planning. But there, there are a number of, I think, significant concerns around H V A C in this building that need to be addressed. I simply mentioned D Wing because, um, those were easy ones to wrap my head around. One other thing, Molly, I want to thank administration this second week running because I think that even though we may need better miking in this building, I think that the, uh, hybrid meeting has gone pretty well. Thanks for that. Especially you too, Ricky, back there.
Hold on.
Thank you.
Jason?
Thanks, Molly. I have a couple of things. Um, if we're a school that believes in restorative practices and we spend a lot of money on a budget each year with that, um, I think it's very important on a couple of things. First, we have 63 state championships hanging in a gymnasium. And kids learn not just by textbooks, but hands-on. And that's varsity state championships. That's not JV. That's not that. 63 state championships. I firmly believe that John Holler is the right man for the job and should be allowed to finish what he started. Um, echoing what Katie Dearborn said and also piggybacking on what you said, Molly. Uh, nobody knows these young men better than Coach Holler and he has the experience and wisdom to continue to mold these young men into adults. I think we can agree that Coach Holler's resignation was handled very poorly and several missteps were taken by the previous administration. Since, since Coach Holler resigned to date, he has spent the following hours coaching and instruct, instructing young men how to compete in basketball. 192 hours with A U where he helped orchestrate a 17-1 record and being ranked number one in New England. Number one varsity team in New England. 20 hours over the last five weeks doing one-on-one instruction with any kid who will show up to the local court for intense basketball instruction. Coach Holler also took on the responsibility of coaching another summer league team for Bellows Falls when a current varsity interim coach pulled the plug on the kids the day of the first game, yet again disappointed all the kids. Coach Holler put up money for the team and also T-shirts for the team so they can play. So that's two teams he's playing, he's coaching, $700 per team. He's paying for it. I know all of this because he's been working with whomever wants to put in the work. Please reread that last sentence. Whoever wants to put in the work. Don't take my word for it, but instead just ask the kids. If you're not willing to hire the best of the best, then what direction will, will we be going? We need to hire a coach with real varsity experience who will market his players for the next level or the next level of education beyond athletics. For many sports are important and their avenue to be successful. We cannot just hire some local parental favorite with no experience at all or a few games with A U. I'd like to see varsity level basketball coach hired so a banner can be hung in the gym. That is the goal. A coach will develop younger levels of the system to cultivate a culture of winning. Many life lessons can be taught when you hire a qualified coach. I would also like to know who's on the hiring committee. Uh, the guidance staff who was on the last hiring committee seems to be the biggest detractors of Coach Holler and their integrity needs to be questioned. At the end of the day, our goal as a school should be to be focused on, not be focused on equal playing time. We should all want more for our kids. Kids actually want to be pushed to be better, not coddled. If our goal is not that, then I would ask that we let competitors compete at a school where hard work and willingness to put in a winning effort are paramount. Thank you.
Priscilla? Coming from a different standpoint, but I feel that we're very blessed to have a dedicated staff of teachers and parents all ready to welcome our students back to, um, classes this fall. I applaud our administration for, um, getting interviews done and finding such wonderful dedicated people to add to the dedicated people that are here. Um, it's been a year plus dealing with COVID issues and so we're going to have a lot of social emotional issues for them to deal with and a lot of academic stuff to make up. So be kind to each other. Just remember that big thing. Be kind.
Thank you for sure. It's nice to be a person and I also like hybrids and, um, welcome to Ian and, um, personal support. I always learned something. Every single person had a passion and you were just trying to figure everything out after a long day. I just, I, I.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to all the teachers, faculty, staff, um, administration and actually all the students as well for last, getting through last year. It was really hard. It's a lot that, uh, everybody had to go through to, um, get through it. And, uh, one thing that from my understanding, reading, uh, uh, reports from around the country and, uh, even around the state is that, uh, I do believe that we had about as many in-person days from our students here at Bellows Falls County High School, really anywhere in the country, except for maybe private schools. So I, I feel like that's, uh, something that we should really acknowledge that. This school did a fantastic job with it. And, um, I would also like to just comment on all the discussion about Mr. Holler. I have to completely disagree with what Mr. Terry just said. Uh, I do not agree that, uh, Mr. Holler's resignation was handled poorly. I think it was handled with the proper due process, um, which is something that Mr. Terry thought I couldn't handle at the last meeting or something, questioned my ability to understand due process. Uh, this was due process. Um, as a parent who wrote a complaint about Mr. Holler, um, that led to a due process, um, which, uh, took a long time because they took their time. I can tell you that I feel like it went great and, um, I noticed that, uh, Mr. Terry also questioned the guidance staff in the, in the hiring committee from the last time. Um, and I would point out that again, as far as due process and policy goes, it's important for Mr. Terry to understand that it's not his job to hire anybody around here. It's the administration's job. Actually, that's not true. It's his job and the, and the board's job to hire the administration and then it's the administration's job to hire their staff. Um, and I believe that it's important for the board to really, uh, stay in their lane and allow the administration to do their job and, uh, um, and really stay out of personnel issues because I'd be sure it would be a great way for us to get our board sued. Thank you.
We need to set it, set the meeting?
I can't set it right now.
Set it right now?
Um, we're going to have to move my schedule and then talk with Mr. Pratt and then we'll send you anything.
Okay, so the regular, the regular meeting.
The regular meeting, I think, doesn't have to be until August 23rd.
So you're not going to do the second.
No, I think we need the second week in August to wait in the middle of summer. We usually don't.
Okay. Just so we can.
Yeah. And then we'll send out an email when we'll do the, the special negotiation.
Got it. Cause I think we're the last four.
Good. I promise. Okay.
I'd like to offer a motion to the chair.
Yes, please. On your journey?
Aye.
Good night.
Thank you.